I just wanted to share some reasons I would be excited about the idea of the Ability Project being involved in the development. Just personally, it's not actually very easy for my family to get out places and to join the rest of the community in shared spaces. Restaurants aren't very easy because we tend to sort of end up going to other people's tables and trying to steal their food or their forks. Music at events is really loud. The Community Center, although it has a number of accessibility features, doesn't have a sensory room. And it's not okay for us to be sort of as loud or behaviorally divergent as we are in a number of circumstances. Even our own friends' houses aren't very easy places to go. Even when we tried to come to a meeting about the Junction, we ended up sort of spending a half an hour just walking around outside of historic Tacoma instead of actually getting to come in and be part of it. And actually, I think among families with developmentally different members, I think my family has it pretty easy because we have a lot of support. So I suspect there are a lot of people we never really get to meet much in public spaces. So my thinking is that there's room to believe that the whole community is served by creating more spaces that are accessible to people with developmental, intellectual, and emotional differences because those are still accessible to everyone else and it's places where we can all be together. And I believe that's what the Ability Project wants to do, is to create a space where we can all be together. And also just recognize that all the abilities I currently have are temporary, and I think that's true for most of us. So we may end up, you know, wanting access to those spaces in ways we hadn't anticipated. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Liu and I live in Ward Two and I love Tacoma Park. And I say that as one of the few young, single people in this city because what I seek after is not bustling nightlife or chic restaurants or stores where I can buy things. What I long for is a strong, robust, resilient community bonded in our relationships across racial and cultural differences and united in a vision that leaves deep, deep down in our hearts of what it looks like to care for each other, care for the planet, and celebrate life. This is what I love about Tacoma Park. And this is what I want more from Tacoma Park. We can do this more and we can do this better and we can do it at the Tacoma Junction. What I want is a thriving third space where friends meet up after work over coffee and samosas, where waving hi to neighbors passing by is something you can count on, where folks who still need to work can escape the boredom of their office or their home and write their emails and miss the sound of laughter and political conversation. What I want is a bustling third space where awesome musicians do their thing like they do every Sunday at the farmer's market, where young ones run and scream as they chase each other through rows of picnic tables and parents try and fail to calm them down, where jugglers juggle, hula hoopers hula, artists draw, singers sing, and organizers organize. What I want is a lush and green third space where plants and sky and sun surround you and offer refuge from pavement and concrete and folks sit under the shade of tall trees on a hot summer day. And if people insist there be brick and concrete, then let them be for groups with a social mission that are for the community, the whole community, the families, the people with less money to spend, blacks, latinos, young and old, non-native English speakers, people with disabilities. Let them be for the co-op because we love the co-op and there's no better institution than a community-owned food cooperative to serve as the anchor for a third space. Food is pleasure, food is sustenance, and the co-op sells food. Let them be for the Ability Project because no other finalist has shown the same commitment to a collaborative, community-driven process. And here's one of those great opportunities for our city to be more inclusive. This is the transformation I want to see at Tacoma Junction, one that puts our investments in relationships and neighbors and community. You know that sounds awesome and right, so let's do it.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tony Camilli and I live on Tulip Avenue. And I would be remissified and say I don't want to ever follow her again. And I should warn all of you, I think your jobs are in jeopardy because that's a budding council member right there. I'm here tonight to show my support for the dog park. And not just to show support for the dog park, but really to kind of talk through what I'm concerned about, from what I understand, is the funding decision on the dog park. It's easy to decide whether you're going to spend some money on something, but in reality, as what I heard tonight from a lot of people in this community is that, you know, money is tight, budgets are thin, and it's expensive to live here. So if you're going to spend money, and that's a good thing, if you decide that, you'd better do it right. And what I'm afraid of with the dog park decision is that you decide to choose the lesser or low option for a dog park and build a minimal possible option. And as a result of that, it's going to be underused and it's going to be wasted money. And that's really what I'm concerned about and that's why I decided to come out tonight. I don't need to rope off any data here, but I'm going to give you some highlights here in case you didn't already know. There are more dogs here than children. You may know that, you may not, but there are more dogs in Tacoma Park than there are children. I have both, fortunately. So dogs are like people. They need exercise, they need to socialize, they need all the same things that people need. And there would be great value added to this community by putting in a good, solid dog park. And not just a dog park that is just an empty space where dogs can congregate, but also a place that brings the community together. Because dog parks are a community asset. And I've been, I've lived around this region a number of years and I've ventured out and seen a lot of different dog parks. And some places have done dog parks well and some places have not. And the places that have not done it well, those dog parks become wasteland. The ones that do it well, they become a real good community asset and people flock to that. It actually becomes an asset that drives people to your city because people want to live in an area or neighborhood like that. So I just implore you to really think hard and long about your decision about how to fund the dog park and to keep in mind adding features that make it a high-quality product. That's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Love it.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Pusel and I just wanted to mention that what we're going to hear tonight, the selected features impacting feasibility and the discussion of trade-offs, I must admit, I'm a little concerned about what I'll hear. And we can't certainly comment afterward, but I wanted to point something out that illustrates why I'm feeling this way, and that is, under community amenities, there's an example of the Veterans Plaza. Now, Veterans Plaza is a $6 million concrete monstrosity that the people there really never wanted. And that was driven by the Silver Spring Chamber of Commerce. People wanted a gathering space. We're not, I hope that the city is not thinking that we're looking for a $6 million gathering space covered in concrete. I mean, I think this is a terrible example. And why am I focusing on this? Because I think that there has been a disconnection through this whole thing with Tacoma Park values and with this whole process. And I want to thank the council for trying to bring it back to really get at those Tacoma Park values. But, yeah, I was very disappointed to see this in here as an example. So, thanks.
Good evening, Stephen Kern, Woodland Avenue. And I just want to say that when I hear the words "development" and "redevelopment" and "revitalization," these are very abstract terms. What isn't abstract are the 12 small businesses that are currently on carol. And I was sort of interested in what they had to think because I have not heard from them in this process. What do they think about the development? I would just say, I'd start with Carriage House Cleaners. Does anyone know how long it's been there? Thirty-five years. So when we talk about revitalizing and looking for, and I've heard in the past, the council and other people talking about getting viable businesses, I would say that that's a viable business that's been there for 35 years. When I spoke to Tacoma Park Animal Clinic, they'd been there for 25 years, 26 years. Seems like a viable business, seems like a good business, a business that you'd want in the Junction. When the, let me just quickly just say what we have. We have a laundromat, SUDs, Tacoma Animal Clinic, 26 years. We have Bikram Yoga, been there seven years, a destination. We have Pizza Roma, it's been there for quite some time under different ownerships. We have a nice little computer shop. If you need your computer fixed, they're there. One of the last people who do that. We've got a framers, we've got a music store. We have a hair salon. How many years has that been there? Nearly 30 years. One business is for lease, one. We have Tacoma Business Center, it's been there for 17 years. Of course, we have Mad Fitness, who's spoken recently in the bakery. So I would say, what do they want? I mean, they're the businesses that we're talking about revitalizing, right? They're part of the equation, we're not trying to get rid of them, right? Has anyone asked them what they wanted? I actually talked to them and wondered why they haven't been here. They're too busy. Mr. Hong of Carriage House Cleaners said he'd love to come down, he's too busy. He's too busy running a business. So the one denominator I got from this group was parking. I hate to say it. I mean, I'm not for parking, I'm for a restaurant, I'm for expansion, the co-op, whatever. But I think they need to be included in this conversation. These are 12 thriving businesses, they're viable businesses and they shouldn't be discounted. There is a "they're," "they're" in the Junction. And if we want to support, if we're behind revitalization and development, I think we should be talking to these people and include them in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will take a short break and come back for, oh, one more. Mr. Lovelace.
Hello, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. One thing I'd like to tell you is Tacoma Junction gives us a great opportunity to, you know, include people of color, people of low income, people of all status of life. You know, we could include immigrants, include non-citizens, we can include a lot of people if we do it right. And I'd like, also as a start, I'd like to see Blessed Coffee open up in Tacoma Junction or the co-op. I'd love to see that. That'd be a real asset to our community. The Ethiopian coffee shop is called Blessed Coffee. I'd like to see this council do a lot for it. And we have a really good chance to, really good chance to reach out to people of color, people of other minorities, handicapped and everything. I'd love to see Tacoma Junction put to that good use. That'd be part of the long way of reaching my dream if I get a gaining piece, you know, without leaving everybody out, without over-gentrifying and all that. I don't want to see that. I want to see where everybody gets something out of it. Yes, in any way, I just want to wish you people a great recess coming up because there won't be any meetings next week until January 5th. I want to wish you people a great time and happy Thanksgiving and great holidays to people of all color, nationality, income, everything. It doesn't matter what religion you are, I wish you all a happy, happy holiday, whether it's Catholic, Christian, Muslim, or whatever. I want to see people get everything on the holiday that they wish for. I want to see them have a great holiday. And I'd like to see the city doing what it can to reach out to their constituents to see if any of them need food. And it'd be great to invite somebody who's homeless or somebody who is a destitute or a relative that you haven't seen for a long time and is, someone with ill health and stuff. I'd like to see you reach out and invite them into your homes or you go out to their home if they have one. So I'd like to see that happen. We're all human beings in this world and we all got something to be thankful for. I'm thankful that we still got Terry Siemens on our council that his surgery was a success. That's my, and his wife Joyce, I want to wish her a happy Thanksgiving too. In any way, I want to tell everybody that other people, my nursing services, I want to wish them a happy Thanksgiving. And I'd like to tell everybody that they are doing a good job keeping me well. And Doris Thompson, you can see, she knows how to put a good ponytail in. She knows how to put a good ponytail in my hair. And I'm blessed to have them, they're from Sandra's Nursing. And Keisha Johnson works on the weekends. I would like to help them because without them, I wouldn't be able to make it. It's a scary thing, but without them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here. Thank you very much for letting me share. I would like to see everybody get something out of that Tacoma Junction and the dog park because you don't have to be a dog to sit down and meet people. You can be and you don't have to be. But I want to see somebody get something out of it. Everybody can get something out of that. Everybody can get something out of Tacoma Junction if we do it right. I'd like to see the city council reaching out more to people of color and inviting them to the meetings and asking them to speak out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving. Don't act like a turkey this week. Love it, love it, love it.
Okay, next on the agenda is council comments.
Council comments.
Council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Mayor, you discussed the agenda in the months going forward. I'd like to remind you a couple of items that I would hope would be scheduled relatively early in the new year. One is consideration, council discussion, I should say, of changes to the city's recycling code to include business recycling, which it does not now exist in Tacoma Park, and reformulation of residential recycling. Councilmember Mail and I are slated to meet with Ken Sigmund and Daryl Braithwaite on December 10th to talk about that. I don't think it'll be controversial, but still, the council will need to consider it. Next, I believe by general agreement, we will have a refresh of the Safe Grow law based on the experience that we've had to date and based on additional guidance that we've received from community members, members of the Committee on the Environment. And so I would like to handle that promptly because the county, Montgomery County, is considering a pesticide ordinance and could, I think, use the guidance that Tacoma Park would provide in our provisions, believe it or not. And then lastly, maybe not in the first quarter of the year, but reminder that the city strategic plan, the five-year plan, runs through the end of fiscal year 15, which is June 30th, 2015. And we do, I think it would be a good idea, I think others agree, to have a series of sessions that would lead to a refresh, whether it's an extension or a rewriting of the strategic plan. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of thank yous. I want to thank the Boy Scouts for inviting me to come out yesterday to talk to them about what's going on in Tacoma Park government. They asked some very good questions. They wanted to talk about the Tacoma Junction, red stabilization, and parking in the Junction and Old Town. I also want to thank Washington Adventist Hospital for hosting me on Saturday, letting me talk to members of the co-op, talk about some of the issues that they see going forward with the Tacoma Junction development. And finally, I would like to alert everyone that Mike Tabor and Esther Siegel are selling Christmas trees this year. So if you want a pesticide-free tree, give Esther a call. Her contact information is in my newsletter. If you don't have it, just send me a short email. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. It's working, okay. I just wanted to thank everyone who was able to come to my home on, yeah, I don't think my mic works. Now is it working? No.
Keep talking.
Push it.
It's push.
All right. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to, that was able to come to my home on Saturday afternoon to talk about the Junction. We had, I think, over about 20 people and people came in and out for almost about four hours. We had a very good conversation and I'm glad that we, the mayor updated us on the changes to the schedule moving forward. I'd just like to reiterate what some of the residents said, that even though council will not be meeting on Monday evenings, that doesn't mean that we can't continue to have meetings and conversations with community members in the month of December. And I look forward to continuing to do that. And so if anyone would like to have a meeting and invite me or have me present, if my schedule allows, I will hopefully be there. Also, I would just like to say I'm glad that we are looking at a series of meetings come January, early February, to engage the public more on the Junction. I just ask that we, I know it's hard for city staff, but that we think about not only doing those in the evenings, but if possible, something on a weekend, just so that we can ensure that we get as many people who have different work schedules or children or other things that prevent them from coming in the evenings. That's it.
Councilmember Schultz.
I just wanted to point out that when Mayor Williams was going through the rolling agenda for next January, mentioned two council retreats about two weeks apart or three weeks apart. And that I just want to make sure that people understand that those are retreats in name only. Retreats suggest that, oh, well, this is where we go off in the woods and, you know, contemplate the stars or something. But in fact, these are public meetings. They're not going to be held here. They'll be somewhere else, as they were probably last year, but they are public meetings, the public is welcome. And you just, you know, we'll eventually be able to tell people the time and the place and all of that. Last year was the first year we did these council retreats, there was two of them. It was a great, a great idea that was initiated by our new city manager. And we're going to do it again this year because it was something that really helped us, I think, as a group. And people want to participate, or at least witness the retreat, they're certainly welcome to do that. That's the only thing I wanted to, oh, I guess I should also mention that on December 2nd, the New Hampshire Gardens Civic Association is having a meeting to elect new officers and to hear, have a speaker from the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission talk about the upcoming project to replace the water mains in the New Hampshire Gardens area of the city, which will start in the spring at work the last two years to replace all the water mains. So for those on Ward Six who are tuned into this, please make note of that meeting.
I have a couple of things. First, I'll say that the council has had retreats. For as long as I've been on the council, the current format was what was different last year.
Well, those were the first two retreats I've attended, was the ones last year.
There's been a bunch. I wanted to let folks know that on Wednesday, I did testify at the joint delegation hearing in Rockville. This was the hearing that the Montgomery County delegation to Annapolis, both Senate and House, hold to hear testimony on priorities that people feel that they should take up this year. And I testified on behalf of the city. Thursday, Councilmember Smith and I attended the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter meeting in Rockville. And there was lively discussion about the Coalition for Utility Reform that the city is a member of. And there was also fairly lively discussion about tax duplication, or as I call it, county revenue theft. And there was a report from our former city manager, Barb Matthews, and Somerset Council Member and Ms. Ludlow is the third member of that group, and talking about how things are proceeding with talks with the county and their representatives, including some, what I'll term "ringers," who were put on there by county staff who are residents not of municipalities in Montgomery County. And it's been a task to bring them up to speed on tax duplication issues. It is interesting that one of them seems to get it and may become our ally in this discussion with the county that's been ongoing for decades about services that the city provides that the county collects taxes for. So stay tuned, those meetings will continue and there's been some progress made. Today, I had a meeting with some folks at the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church about what's been going on there with the commercial kitchen. And they did reiterate that they're not going to go forward with the dormer so that there's very little exterior change to the church being contemplated so that they are, they have filed their historic area work permit and that there will be a hearing at the county that's either December 16th or 18th. I'm not sure of the date, but it's mid-December. Today, I also attended the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission meeting, I'm on that body. I had a talk with Stan Wall from Womata and he said that they're planning on having the compact hearing discussion with the Womata Board at their January meeting and that they're going to have the, all of the information for that board meeting ahead of time available for the public to look at.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you know if that will go to the real estate committee before it goes to the full board?
I don't know. Then at the Sustainable Growth Commission meeting, we had some updates and discussion about the Purple Line. We had some, among the representatives on that body are some representatives from the Maryland Department of Transportation, the secretaries Designey and some other folks. And people asked point-blank what their best evaluation was of whether the Purple Line and the Red Line in Baltimore, what the chances are with the new administration coming in. And they basically said, "We don't have any idea." The timing is such that the Purple Line funding is in Governor O'Malley's budget. As we heard last week, I guess with our lobbyists, the governor will be sworn in on the 21st and the budget comes over to the legislature on the 23rd or 24th. So the feeling was that things will happen after the 21st, but the starting point is that it's in the budget. So the other update was that the Purple Line compact will be ready for people to sign mid-December and that's for all of the various jurisdictions who are part of it. And so I imagine that there will be an opportunity for the city to sign that compact. And there's going to be some organizing and activities around trying to make the case for the Purple Line to stay in the governor's budget. I also got, which I can pass down the dais if anybody wants to take a look, the Sustainable Growth Commission spent most of this last year coming up with our report on Reinvest Maryland, Accelerating Infill Redevelopment and Community Derivationalization. This is the quick and dirty brochure that points toward the report with 66 recommendations if anybody wants to take a quick look. It's hot off the press. And I just wanted to let folks know that there was some public comment about the item on our consent agenda about the nuclear free zone, the list for designating who is a, who is not in compliance with our ordinance. We've talked with the Nuclear Free Zone Committee about having follow-up discussions on this and other issues in the next year so that there will be an opportunity to kind of go back over some of that ground and see where people want to go. And the final item was, I just want to let people know that I will be having breakfast tomorrow morning with Dr. Waymouth Spence, who's president of Washington Adventist University. And this will be the first, it'll be the first breakfast meeting. I've had some meetings with him already and we're trying to have an ongoing series of meetings to make sure that they're up on what the city is doing and we're up on what of meetings to make sure that they're up on what the city is doing and we're up on what the university is doing. And that's my items. I don't see any other lights, so we'll move to city managers' comments.
Thank you. Just briefly wanted to mention, on the night of December 9th, which I believe is a Tuesday, if I get that right, at 7:30 in the library, the library space planning consultant has finished some preliminary draft options as it relates to library space, and wanted to present some of those options in a public forum, just to get some feedback from residents and from the community. We'll be sending out a special invitation to council as well. We encourage you to attend. We can also give you, if interested, some additional information about any of those proposals. The deputy city manager and myself have seen some of the options, and I think there's some exciting things that are there as it relates to space planning options at the library. To answer just one of the questions, we've got right now scheduled two council retreats, both in January. The first one, we actually did want to structure it a little bit around the existing strategic plan. You know, I think a longer process in terms of doing a new strategic plan can be something that we can talk a little bit about. I know at that meeting in particular, what we had hoped to do was get council's feedback on just some priorities as it relates to the strategic plan, such that even if it was just an update of the existing strategic plan, we can get a sense about which direction we might want to go. That would be obviously before then, the second retreat, which is going to be more focused around the budget and some budget priorities, as the fiscal year '16 budget process will also be kicking off in January and February. And then finally, just wanted to just briefly acknowledge, which most people have heard, just the passing of Marion Berry. He was a very complicated person in many ways. I had an opportunity to work with him over the last five years, and, you know, his ability to advocate for those who were less fortunate was admirable, particularly those people of color, those people of different sexual orientation, those people of lower income levels. And I will also say, he also advocated for me to get fired when I first came on council. Like I said, he was a very --
That's a compliment.
-- up-and-down type of person, but he will be missed in many ways. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one set of minutes. Would somebody like to move adoption of the October 20th minutes?
Move.
Move by Councilmember Mail, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now move to our regular voting session. First item is Agenda Item Number 2, and this is Second Reading Ordinance Authorizing the FY '15 Budget Amendment Number 2. We've had first reading, we've had some discussion on this. Are there any changes to this?
There is a proposed amendment in addition to the budget amendment, and that has to do with the consent item 4D that has been taken off related to the purchase of a security video sharing system. And so a little bit kind of wondering which should go first in this discussion. We do have information about that program, but essentially, what is included in the budget amendment proposal is to use speed camera revenue to pay the cost of the software system that allows residences and business owners to share the video systems that they already have if they would like to be part of -- to be accessible for police investigation about something that might have happened on their street, that kind of thing. Captain Fishcorn is here. He had done a presentation to us, I think it was last July, about that, but it was not included in the budget. There was a little bit of discussion about which account would -- we were waiting for some other funds to come in, but in the budget amendment that's before you, it would be using speed camera revenue. Everything else is the same. I have included in the package the spreadsheet that tries to keep track of the two budget amendments, which will then be, once this is finalized, posted on the website along with the details about the budget amendments. I'm not sure if there's a -- if you want to just go ahead and vote on it, or if there's some -- do you want to have a presentation about the video sharing system now and then not have it as part of?
It seems like if we had a motion to table till after the security item discussion and vote, then that would make it easier.
I would second the motion to table the budget amendment till after the security item.
Okay.
I'll second if you just made one.
I did, yeah.
All those in favor of the motion to table, please raise a hand. Okay, that item is tabled until after we take up item -- until after we do the consent agenda, until after we do items -- item 4D, and then we'll come back to it.
Sounds good.
So the next item is Resolution Authorizing Closure for a Portion of Ann Street on Wednesdays at the Crossroads Farmers Market from June 2015 through November 2015. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
I'll move it.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Any council discussion on that one? Okay, that is a resolution, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next up is the Consent Agenda, which includes items A, B, C, E, G, and H. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Grimes. There are a number of single reading ordinances on this, so we will need a roll-call vote on the consent agenda. Will a court please call or?
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now go to the two removed consent agenda items with the Agenda Item Number 2 sandwiched between them. So first, we will go to the Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Purchase of a Security Video Sharing System. And so now, I'll turn to staff who can talk about this item.
I wonder whether any council members actually are in doubt about this system as opposed to other issues associated with the item.
Well, if we can hear just what the staff has to say, then we'll discuss it.
Basically, this is what I went over before with the PowerPoint. The Community Cam Program would be something that -- it's something that we don't -- the police department doesn't maintain the information. We only go to a platform that's maintained by the company, and it's all secure and everything. Only the investigators and our crime analysts can go to it, and this is going to be very helpful for us because this takes after the Community Safe Cam Program that Philadelphia has and a couple other agencies. And what it does is they -- the citizens or businesses can go, and they can go to this website, and they can register their cams. It's all voluntary. If they do that, it records all the information on their camera and some information about them to allow investigators to contact them, say there's a crime that happens on a certain block, and we want to find out what if any cameras are available in that area for us to look at footage. If they're registered in the Community Cam Program, and we partner with the community, we'll reach out to the person in that area next to where this crime happened and say, "Hey, I see that you're registered. We'd like to come out and look at your video." And that's basically it. We don't maintain any database with the video. That's all stored on their own systems. The city's not paying for a camera system. I know there's concerns of citizens sometimes about Big Brother and all that. We're not maintaining any cameras, any database with the camera information. We're just going out to whoever maintains it, and we view the video and see if it's helpful in closing crime. In Philadelphia, they had 85 arrests in six months, 85 closures in six months. So it's very helpful. And in the city, when we see an increase in robberies and burglaries, theft from autos, most of the time, it's one person that gets out that we catch that is responsible for numerous crimes, or the same group of people. So, you know, this is not only a deterrent that we can use because we're going to be one of the first ones in the metropolitan area to have it, but it's also a very good resource for the investigators, time that we would normally would have to spend going out throughout the community, knocking on doors, trying to find out if there's any systems. This would be something that's very easy to go into and help us close a lot of cases. And we've seen, even after the presentation that I did before, we've seen numerous cases that we've had, both in-home camera systems and those ones that they put out for, like, deer. We've had pictures of that, too, to help us in burglary cases. So it's very helpful, and I foresee, you know, once it gets started and once we see some closures on it, we're going to get a lot more participation.
And the -- what's -- the cost of this is for basically to come up with a system for the database so that you know?
Yeah, the cost is broken out into -- they actually lowered it. It's $12,750, and as for customization, the license and the platform itself, to put everything together, to make it unique to Tacoma Park. Our page is going to be unique to us. It's going to be, you know, they're going to develop it and customize it. And then the licensing and the support and the hosting and maintenance and updates, that's a yearly fee. And I was in negotiation with them, and they lowered that also. That's $3400 a year to do all the -- make sure -- and it's 24-hour support, so if we have any issues with anything on the site, we can call them. And it deals -- a thousand of that deals with the license, and the 2,400 deals with the maintenance support and updates. So the one fee that we're looking at is just a one-time fee for setting everything up. The platform's very nice. If you go online and look at Philadelphia Safe Cam Program, I reached out to the company and asked them a little bit of background on some of the stuff that they've done, and they helped with -- they developed the Safe Cam Program for Philly. They also -- they deal with Philadelphia Tip Line. They came up with their web stuff for that, also their police blog, Philly Police Mobile Site. It's a very good site that you can go to, very user-friendly. And I looked at a couple of them. I looked at that one. I looked at one in Louisiana, one in Kansas. It's like three or four of them that I looked at, and that just seems to be the basic, most, you know, the easiest one to use. And I think it would benefit us a lot if we get it.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I actually don't have any questions for you. The information you gave us this evening is the same as you gave us several months ago. My concern is procedural, that this item was not on the rolling agenda as of the last council meeting. It didn't appear on the council's agenda until, I guess, until Friday. It appeared in both the budget amendment and as the consent agenda item. In the budget amendment, it was not part of the first reading budget amendment. I think that a program of this nature, regardless of its merits, needs to be debated by the public with adequate public notice. I did ask the mayor, is his prerogative to remove this item from the voting agenda tonight and revert it to a work session item? So I don't know whether it's in order now for me to introduce a motion to table, or whether I need to wait until this has been introduced, but I -- can you tell me?
Not sure.
All right, I'm going to introduce a motion to table, and we'll see where it gets. I am not doing this based on the merits of the program. I am doing this based on inadequate public notice of this item. This item has been on the city's agenda for six months now. It could have been introduced with public notice and should have been, in my opinion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved to?
Table the item.
And remind me, when we table, do we specify at times certain?
I'm fine with your bringing it back with public notice as early as you wish.
So as early in January as feasible. All those in favor of the motion to table, please raise a hand.
Can we ask questions first?
Well, there's no discussion of a motion to table. So all those?
I don't really care if you do.
No, no, I just -- I have -- I mean, I have a question on whether or not it impacts the program if we -- I guess I can't ask.
So if we don't table it, we'll ask those questions and get answers, and then see where we want to go. So all those in favor of the motion to table, raise a hand. All those opposed? Okay, the motion to table fails. Now, other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Captain, so this is just another crime-fighting tool that your department wants to implement, right?
Yes, and I brought it up at a couple different citizen meetings, and everybody seems to want something like this. They've talked about numerous meetings, including the town hall meeting. They talked about having camera systems, talking about the tag readers and stuff like that. This is just another tool that's going to help us. I'm trying to get our investigators up to speed with technology and utilizing that to help us out, and this is a great tool. It's had a lot of success throughout the country and the places it's had it, so -- and I think, you know, that it's going to help us in the same way.
So if residents, they sign up and they, you know, decide a month, six months later, that they don't want to do it, is there?
There'd be a mechanism to take them off so that they're no longer registered.
And is all their data eliminated?
Yeah, we can talk to the company and have it eliminated.
Okay. Thank you very much to support the proposal.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you for coming out tonight. So I guess I had a few questions. The company that we would be working with, so I guess what happens to the video? So you see, someone is registered. I went to the Philly website while you were talking about it. They've registered, there's a crime committed on that street. The department, you know, matches up the database to the crime and says, "Okay, this is the person. I'm going to call them up." You call them up, and they say, "Yeah, you can have my tape." Does an officer on the force then go and get the tape, or does the company mediate that in some way?
No, the company's not involved in that. The company is just kind of like the nexus to hook us up. We'll summon investigator out. They would pick up any useful video, and that would then become evidence in the case.
Okay.
Become evidence, and if it's something worthwhile that's, you know, useful evidence, then we would use it in any prosecution.
Okay. And then a question, either for either of you or for city manager. Are we going to need a year from now, or two years from now, are we going to need an IT, a .25 FTE of an IT person to maintain it or anything like that? Is there going to be a longer-term fiscal consequence with regard to staffing?
We could do that now, but that's not because of this program. This program actually doesn't require -- that's why we are going outside. We are having an outside company do it, because we frankly just don't have the ability to do it in-house and not do it right. One of the things that I do want to stress in this program is that the investigator on the street can pull up their smartphone, their tablet, go to Google Maps, or go to this program, and pull up all the cameras on Google Maps, and we can go knock on those doors that night, especially if it's a serious crime, where in the past, we'd have to start knocking on doors and just hope that somebody has it. So that -- it really is an important tool for us, but no, that's why we are going out. That's why we negotiated a reasonable maintenance fee for a yearly fee. They take pity on smaller departments, you know, because they do want their product out there as well.
And I guess my last comment would be that I guess that I'm inclined to support it, although I am sympathetic to Councilmember Grimes's comment about reasonable debate, and I remember speaking against a motion that Councilmember Grimes introduced to add an FTE to a previous budget amendment on that same grounds.
At first reading.
Correct, that was more time. I guess my one qualifier I would put out there is that if, after six months, 12 months, whatever the right period of time is, we have four cameras registered or some number that really doesn't justify a $3,500 annual expense, I would suggest we switch to an Excel database to keep track of it, that, you know, somebody can have -- dispatch can have a copy of. But ideally, it works, and it provides evidence, as you said, and people who have home cameras link them in. But I'll -- if I have other comments, I'll just chime in later.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. When folks register, are they registering with the company or with the police department?
It's with the -- they're going -- it's with the company, but it's not -- it's only shared with the police department.
Okay, so when?
It's not shared with anyone else. The only one that has access to it, it's secure access, and the only one that has access to it is the police department, and we determine who, which would be the investigators and the crime analysts.
Okay, so when we -- when if you rolled this out, we would be telling residents to go to this website, register?
Yeah, and part of the fee with the initial setup is they provide publications and stuff, you know, to let people know about the program, what it is, and how to register.
And have you or will you be writing up specific procedures to go along with this? You know, that was one of the things that we raised when we had the conversation about license plate readers and how it's important license plate readers and how it's important whenever even as somewhat seemingly innocuous technology is used, that we have procedures in place that are clear in terms of, you know, who can access, who can request videos and things like that. Is that in place yet and what would be the timeframe?
It's not in place now, but that's easy enough to create a general order that explains how the system's used and how it should not be used and who has access to it and set some guidelines.
And if, you said you got a good deal on this, talking to them? Is there a time?
Negotiated the price down.
Okay, you negotiated the price down. Is there a time limit on that negotiated price?
No, we want to get it done sooner than later because they're busy with different projects. As you can imagine, once they did the Philly Safe Cam Program, there's a lot of companies or a lot of agencies that are getting with this company, trying to get the same thing. I gave a presentation on this in COG and there's a lot of agencies that were calling me after that wanting to know about the program because they're interested in it, too. Because in this area, in the metropolitan area, there are no agencies that are using it.
Okay. Great, I think I'm also supportive. I am, wish we did have a chance to raise this before. That was one of the reasons I had asked to have this pulled from the consent agenda, that even while I think this is a good program moving forward, I do think it's important that we have conversations. And I would really just like to stress that having general orders in place before we put any type of program like this in place would be important.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm inclined to support this because it sounds like something that's pretty benign, but also at the same time, very helpful. But I guess when, a couple of questions. First is, I'm trying to understand exactly what the burden is on, say, the homeowner. Take me, for example. If I decide to install a video cam on my house, I guess, or if I already have one, is there some special requirement of the kind of equipment that I would need or say a business owner would need to install?
No, we don't recommend, we don't recommend any specific system. So it's whatever system you have, if you have one already or you're going to buy one. I know some places like Philadelphia, they had come up with something, if you, they came up with some legislation, if you have a certain portion of the right-of-way that's filmed on your property, then they have some tax incentives that they give. You know, that may be something further down the line if this is a really good program and it works out really well. But no, it's whatever current system they have, and then if they want to make it available and partner with the police, and you know, we try to tell a lot of people that, you know, we can't do stuff without the community. And this is a great partnership that, you know, anybody that has a camera, we're not telling them they have to give us the information, we're not monitoring anyone, it's their own systems. And so they're going to call us and we're going to come out and get the information off the system. So it's whatever system they want to get. There's some great systems for $200, $300.
Okay. If I have a system and I've registered it and you decide that you need to see the video that's located, say, and I don't want to give it to you, am I being, doing something wrong other than just being stubborn or, you know, or do I have an obligation by virtue of being registered to cooperate?
No, you don't have an obligation to cooperate, but we assume that if you went through all of the stuff to register and you wanted to share with us, that you would.
Yeah.
If you determined that you don't want to, then maybe there would be a conversation as to whether you want to continue to be registered or you just don't want to share it this time. It's not something we're going to come out and force you to give us the information. We're just, it's a, it's a place for us to go to seek the evidence if it is.
I hear you. In terms of locating the thing, I guess from your point of view, it might be better for it to be pointed in the direction of the street so that you can see somebody passersby, cars and all that, whereas I might say I'd rather have it pointed at my back door, my side door, my front door.
We could always have a conversation or have it in our policy that, you know, if someone registers, that we reach out to them. We do home security surveys on people that ask for them. That would be something similar that we could go out and just say, look, we see you registered this camera, it'd be more useful to have it pointed in this direction rather than that direction. That's something that we could always do.
Okay. And otherwise, I would not be bothered by you guys until and unless there was an incident that seemed to have been, apparently from your perspective, occurred proximate to my particular property, and so you think, well, maybe the Schultz residence would be of some use. But otherwise.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be contacted.
I'd never hear from you.
Yeah, and it's something where if there was a crime on a particular address, we would put that into the system and it would, it would show us on Google Maps where all of the different registered cameras are. And there's so many out there, I'm sure, that we don't even know about. I mean, we've, when we did just a precursory look, there was about 80 of them in the city. And that's not even going through, I'm sure there's hundreds of them in the city. It can be very helpful. There's some that, on some recent cases that we got for some burglary, a couple of different burglaries that we had, we had a couple of cameras that we were made aware of that we didn't know about. And just stuff like that, it helps. And it's just a place for us to go look. And the deterrent in the crime prevention and it, just closing one of them burglaries could close, you know, 20, 30 of them or could close, you know, future ones that we don't even know about that could be five, 10 of them, because that's how it happens. When we get one person coming in and doing a burglary, that person's normally responsible for doing many, including, you know, right along our borders in DC and Montgomery County.
And this is something that you need, this software platform, because it's just not going to work unless you have it.
Well, it manages everything, it keeps it up to date, and it allows, it allows a manner in which the citizens can go in and they can register, and we don't have to go out knocking on every single door asking, do you have a camera, what kind of camera, you know, all of that. It's all voluntary, it just manages a lot better because, you know, people move, people take systems out, people put new systems in, it just, it keeps it all up to date if they want to participate in it.
Would you expect to be spending some of your money to create some mailing to all the, all the property owners in the city?
I think we'd probably put stuff out on listservs and whatever venues that we have right now for advertising, just to let people know that we're starting this program and we want people to participate. And then, you know, after that, it's probably going to be word of mouth, hey, I registered, do you have a camera, did you register?
Right, right. Yeah, I know, we had a rash of burglaries in Hillwood Manor about three, three weeks ago, and there's all this email on listservs, people scared, talking to each other, wanting to know what was going on and what did you see and all this other stuff. And we all know that it was just one or two people who were just sort of saying, feasting on a particular neighborhood, and that's all they were doing. And if they'd gotten caught at the first time or something like that, it was the so-called crime wave would have disappeared in a big hurry. So I understand what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. My people mind, it seems like a good idea. And I appreciate you bringing this to us. I have to agree with Councilmember Grimes that something like this is something we frequently hear a lot back from the community on, and so it's disappointing not to have had this on the agenda in a way that would bring public comment. I appreciate that my constituents have the confidence in me to make these kinds of decisions, but it's always nice to hear their opinions before we vote on something rather than afterwards. But because they do place that confidence in me, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this tonight, and I appreciate your bringing this to us. It sounds like a good idea. And my constituents have full faith, I'm sure, that if they find this objectionable and enough people come here and raise their concerns, that we will address those in that time. Thank you.
And I'll just say, it sounds like, I did hear a concern about understanding if the investment in the software and all that is a good idea and getting some feedback on that, and it seems an appropriate time, if we pass this, to do that. We're scheduled to do your annual report in January of '15. It would seem like if there's going to be a report in January of '16, that would be a good time to include feedback on how that's going and whether the investment is worth it. So I believe we have not had a moving of this.
Move it. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Smith. Any further council comment? Okay, this is a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase, and so it would require a roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay, now we have the tabled budget amendment number two. Let's remind me, do we need to have a motion to bring it off the table?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Stewart, second by Councilmember Mayo to bring that agenda item number two, second reading off the table. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Okay, that's unanimous. That's now back on the table. And so we have the budget amendment number two. And that, by being back on the table, I want to make sure I get this right, it's been, when it went onto the table, it had not been moved. Therefore, it's on the table, but it hasn't been moved yet.
So moved?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Mayo, second by Councilmember Schultz. Now, any further comments on the budget amendment which is, which has been moved with the amendment to the first reading, including the security video sharing system? Okay, not seeing any comments. This is a resolution, let me get back to the right place.
No ordinance.
Yes, or second reading ordinance, therefore, we'll need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Aye, okay, second reading passes unanimously. Now, turn the page and go to consent agenda item F, which was removed from the consent agenda. This is a single reading ordinance awarding contract for services for development of a concept plan for Tacoma Park Recreation Center site. Councilmembers, I think Stewart and Schultz.
And Mayo.
And Mayo wanted this removed. Councilmember Grimes, is that an old light or a new light?
No, I'd like to comment.
Okay, well, you're the owner of the light, go.
Okay, thank you. So the city council did put in the FY '15 current fiscal year budget money, I think it was $44,000 for, $45,000 for New Hampshire Avenue, Tacoma Langley Crossroads. Studies regarding revitalization is the popular word this evening. When the item that we're about to vote on in a similar RFP for the Recreation Department, for the REC Center, appeared on the agenda, that was the first I knew that that money that the council had voted for New Hampshire Avenue and Tacoma, I'm sorry, Tacoma Langley Crossroads revitalization had been specifically channeled to the REC Center. I don't recall that there was any discussion that those would be the uses of this money. Was there? When was that?
During the budget process, we talked about specifically this issue of park and planning having.
Yeah, we did, and we twisted the county council's arm to give us $5,000 toward the REC Center. I was not, I will repeat, aware, maybe I missed something, that the full amount of the money that the council had allocated for this revitalization would be allocated to the REC Center. I'm actually somewhat disappointed about that because I wasn't aware I might have missed something, because I think there are much greater needs along that corridor and in that area. So I will hope that we will have money allocated in the FY '16 budget for not just the REC Center, but for business, residential, transit, streetscape, other forms of revitalization, perhaps via consulting in that, in those areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
The proposal is to approve a contract for $11,855. That's to initiate a, the first of two possible studies. So that's going to leave, our $45,000 budget is still going to leave about $34,000 for the second study and other, other studies that you're going to be doing. It's not using up the whole pot of money, is that correct?
That would be correct. We haven't gotten, we actually adjusted when we got the price proposals in on the second study yet, so we're still evaluating that.
Yeah, so I, okay, I guess what I wanted to understand, I wasn't aware that the RFP had been issued, and I didn't see the RFP, so I don't know exactly, other than the one sentence here that says as to look at, as to whether the site provides any long-term potential to provide recreational services coupled with other development opportunities. Now, in previous conversations with staff, we've acknowledged and heard that, you know, the REC Center is 45 years old, that it's got, it's wearing out and is functionally obsolete, and that it's having a difficult time meeting the diverse demands of a changing demographic, et cetera, et cetera. We could go on and all that. And I'm aware that one of the, you know, we know about the ownership, the land is owned by somebody else, Maryland National Capitol Park Planning Commission, which is a complication. So is this, how is this study expected to address the issue of the transfer of the ownership of the land from the parks people to the city of Tacoma Park?
Again, our thought is that park and planning has asked and particularly really wants us to take ownership of the facility. We have, in a conversation, two conversations earlier with them last year, or earlier this year, have mentioned that we've got concerns around some of the facility needs, obviously, that would happen at the site. And then just long-term, we don't exactly know what we would do with that site in particular. And I know in the past, there's been some discussion around, you know, providing other opportunities at that site, maybe that couple a recreation facility with something else. We know that we've got some development limitations as it relates to sort of site access, which is actually through, as Councilmember Schultz, as you know, it's through another property, which still needs to be sort of clarified. It's got some challenges as it relates to parking. But on the glass half-full side, we know that we've got more and more interest in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor with bus rapid transit, with purple line development, and so we're hopeful that one of the answers that we get from this study is if there is some other permutation or option around providing something at that site that we can couple with a recreation center use, that we might be in a better position to ultimately provide that recreation center use in a new or renovated building or new facility in some way.
One of the things that, about this concept is that if it was decided that the REC, that there was some good new use that could be realized at that, and ultimately realized is that we, the existing building would have to be removed, undoubtedly, particularly if you're going to have additional uses there. And that means we would be without a recreation center, the city of Tacoma Park, for probably two years, give or take. And that, that to me would be something that I, I don't, I don't understand how the city would cope with that, because that, there's no place to move those programs to, at least it's not obvious, to me. And I'm just wondering, is that study, would that study be able to consider the consequences of having to close and the REC Center for that amount of time before the new one would be built and occupiable?
My sense, especially for the $11,000 that we're hopeful to approve for the study, it's not, that's not part of the scope. I think that kind of decision is one that honestly, I would, I would almost enjoy being able to come back to council and talk about, because then it seems like there would be an option on the table. Right now, I don't even, I don't think we even have an idea about whether a new renovated facility is something we could even think about on that existing site right now.
If I may, I mean, part of the reason for the other request for proposal process was to find out even what kind of recreational services are needed and if there is a geographic location that needs to be related to that, in that area, because it may be that something could be started elsewhere and you're Because it may be that something could be started elsewhere, and you're not even slowing down the use of a facility for a desired recreation use. But I think going into this process, there were just so many unanswered questions about what do you do with this really weird property that's not easy to just, off the top of, fairly experienced developers had no, you know, how marketable it is, what kind of use it could be, and in a really separate look, what kind of recreation needs are there in that area, and what would best fill that? And then, as the city manager said, we're going to have to come back here and talk it out, because it's, it's just that we need base information.
I understand. And I, I'm not objecting to, to the study. I think it's, what you just explained, excellent reason as to why we should go ahead with it, but I just think at some point in time, we have to ask the question, is there a better location for a new Rec Center somewhere on New Hampshire Avenue? And how do we get, get it? I think that's a very important question, among other things. When do you think this study will be completed? This one we're talking about?
I think we're, and I am not as familiar with this specific proposal, but I'm pretty sure that we would be looking at no more than a, I think, sixty or ninety day process, probably closer to sixty, because if there are any additional recommendations that come from that study that we wanted to include in the fiscal year sixteen budget, or at least for consideration, we would want to be able to do that. That's one of the reasons why we're trying to put this on, on the council agenda for December, as opposed to January, is just to make sure we have.
I'll mirror what I saw from staff.
Ninety.
What was that?
Ninety days. And I think it's down at the bottom there, for proof the project's completed within ninety days of execution of the proposed.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, apologize. Okay, thank you.
And I missed a thumb to make it nice. Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. I, I'm not quite clear if I can make this motion or not at this time, because I'm not sure whether we've introduced it, but I would motion to table this, at least to the time that we can read the, the RFP. This is an important project. It's as important as the Tacoma Junction lot. We've heard so many people say, a piece of public land is something different than a private site that a government entity is trying to influence. If the New Hampshire corridor vision that has been put together in various planning documents, county and city, goes forward, the site's even more important. And so, for me at least, to not see the RFP, the only thing I know is that this is an analysis of development potential. I just don't know what that means. And so, I'd rather spend a little bit more time to get it right. As we've seen tonight, we can put money into budgets at last minutes, or do budget amendments. So, if ninety days after some discussion of this in January means that we're not able to get it in the first draft of the budget, we have to put it in the second draft, you know, I'm totally willing to do that. I would add that I think there, if I'm understanding this document correctly, there's an October seventeenth and an October twenty-seventh RFP, and so, and this one responds to the first of those. It would be great to have council see both RFPs. And I think that's all I would say right now.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor of the motion to table, please raise a hand.
Table it indefinitely, table it to the new year?
My motion is to the new year after a time at which the council has seen the RFPs.
Okay.
Is that, is that an acceptable form?
Yes. Okay, now, hands in favor of the motion to table. Okay, it's tabled until January.
And it's the agenda list full?
Yes, yes.
Mayor, may I make a quick remark? Set out of order.
It's out of order on that item, because it's tabled.
It's up to you.
Yeah, that one, yeah, remarks on that one are out of order. We're on to the next one. After I get my notes here.
Where are we, anyway?
And I'll, and I'll just note on that vote to table that that was six to one. I did not vote for it.
So, we're just about done with the easy ones now?
We've had a little lesson in tabling. So, now we have two remaining items on our agenda this evening, and that's our work session items. And the first one is overview of the community benefits and trade-offs related to Tacoma Junction. And a reminder that it's ten twenty-three.
Thank you. I will try to be brief. And I think we have a PowerPoint presentation, and I know it's in your packets as well, and there we go, fantastic. Again, we wanted to just briefly talk about some of the community benefits and trade-offs, really as it relates to anywhere that the city has. This just happens to be at the junction in particular, especially as we sort of set up the January twelfth discussion of financial information from the proposals. Very quick agenda. We'll talk about some of the features impacting feasibility, fair value, some numbers around long-term financial impact, and then, just again, reiterating the slide that the mayor talked about as it relates to the timeline for the junction. So, what makes the project, a project, any project feasible? Well, you know, the status quo which exists today, which is that the lot is empty, it's a parking lot, it's feasible. We have enough money to cover any additional expenses that are there. We hold functions that are there. It is not on the city's property tax rolls, but, you know, that's obviously a decision in terms of trade-offs that the city's made, that it's, that it works fine as, in its current sort of function. One of the things in the process, as we talked about even last January, is that, you know, if the city council was interested, and the decision was to do this, was to see if there's any other potential uses that could happen at that site, and that's the sort of process that we're along now, and we'll be continuing to talk about in January, February of next year. But it's important to remember that any change that happens at the junction has got to also be feasible in some way. We've always got costs and benefits. Many of those factors that can impact that include things like having different kinds of community amenities, green space, having meeting spaces for the community, potential mitigants to negative externalities, which is kind of a big word, just means trying to take care of the bad stuff. We've got traffic, we've got noise, we've got other things that happen in that area. And so, that can be a factor that can be taken into consideration as we continue to think about what can happen at the junction. One of the things in terms of the city's responsibility is to think about this, this concept of fair market value, which is that the site was purchased by the city for the benefit of the city, and if the city chooses to go in a direction of long-term leasing or, or conveyance to another entity, that the city should be getting fair market value for anything that happens. And we'll talk a little bit more about fair market value, because it is possible for the city to take fair market value, not always in the consideration of cash. There's lots of different ways that can even include public benefits or public good that can be incorporated into how the city gets fair market value for, for something that happens there. Talked a little bit about a catalyst for other commercial establishments. There's, there's, again, this is a commercial corridor. We have existing businesses. The co-op is obviously the best example of this. You know, we want to make sure that we are providing amenities that continue to be complimentary to the existing businesses that are, that are located there, because it is a business corridor. And then finally, we've talked a little bit, obviously in the past, about the importance of support for the co-op and its expansion that can happen in that area, in particular even on, on the city-owned site. So, it is true, and I think it would not be Tacoma Park if I did not state the obvious, which is that different groups have different values on different factors, right? That is the whole issue of trade-offs, is that not every single person probably has a different way that they would evaluate what's important at the junction. And, you know, we continue to hear lots of those when we, when we have these meetings, and that's part of the process. I mean, that's hearing from residents, from, from community members, really to you all, the council, to sort of help sort of adjudicate some of that, is the, is the goal of these different trade-offs that we have. So, for this chart, and this is really just, it's really just for explanation purposes only, so these numbers are not hard by any stretch of the imagination, but we wanted to just provide a simple matrix that talks a little bit about these kind of trade-offs that you have, particularly from a financial perspective. And we just took, on the first column, we took some of the project features that we've heard or seen, and some of the proposals that have been submitted to us, underground parking, affordable residential space, office-based community amenities. And then we wanted to sort of put that in a matrix as it relates to, so what's the cost? So, there's a cost to every single thing that is proposed that would be different on the site. There is a corresponding, in some cases, either cash flow income side that results from doing something different at the site, and/or that income or value is taken in more, more in-kind ways. It can be taken in the form of, of public good. It can be taken for community benefit. You know, right now, that site is a parking lot, but we have Monster Bash there, we have Christmas tree sales there, we have places that people think are important and remember. And so, you know, that's, that's obviously, doesn't necessarily always have a cash value to it, but it certainly has an intrinsic value to it that's important to, to weigh. And so, we just provided some, just estimates around some of the cost features for some of these items, and then just took a look at some of either the income or the community value, sort of trade-offs that you get on the other side of that. You know, I think it's, it's important, and you see this, especially for that first one, you sort of see this in different proposals, underground parking is expensive. I mean, forty thousand per parking spot is an expensive proposition, and I think that for, and I will look at Sarah to tell me if I'm right about this, but I think that the, I think there are three proposals that have underground parking right now, and for those underground parking, I think most of them either try to get close to or slightly less than the existing parking spaces that we have right now. So, we have fifty-ish parking spaces, high forties parking spaces today?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Right.
I think that, does that include the ones that the co-op has?
The co-op has seventeen.
Seventeen of them.
Seventy-three in the parcel overall.
So, you know, we're talking upwards of thirty, forty, and fifty parking spots times forty or fifty thousand dollars a parking spot.
I'm sorry, when, when I said the co-op has seventeen, I meant on Sycamore, so fifty-six includes the co-op's on the stadium lot.
That's what I thought, so it's about forty or so. So, you know, it quickly, you know, ten parking spaces is half a million dollars, twenty parking spaces is a million dollars. So, there's a significant cost to putting in underground parking if it's proposed, and some, we have at least one proposal that has not proposed to put underground parking, but that needs to be offset someplace, right? You know, for something to be feasible, we've got to have some sort of corresponding, either intrinsic value or monetary value to, to offset that. So, one of the ways that you can offset something like underground parking, and as you can see from the income side of this, it doesn't really have an income flow that's associated with underground parking for the most part, is you can put in additional space. Some of those additional spaces that have been provided in some of the proposals, commercial space, market-rate residential, affordable housing, office space. You know, the, the guesstimate around the construction cost is, you know, somewhere between a hundred, two hundred dollars a square foot, depending upon how much space that you're doing. It's pretty small-scale development, so you don't need concrete and steel, so you're really looking at wood frame construction, which is the cheapest way to, not cheap, it is the most cost-effective way to build something that's of a smaller scale. And then you've got a variety of lease rates that you can charge as a result of building that space. And again, I think the important calculation is not to look at, as an example for commercial space, look at a hundred to a hundred and twenty bucks a square foot, and then go over lease rates and say, oh, well, it's not as, it's not as much. That lease rate is something that can be taken out over a number of years, and so there's a capitalized value, net present value, that you get from a lease rate that at some point starts to equate the cost of building that space with the value or the, or the lease rate that you get from, from leasing the space out. And, you know, it, it's one of these concepts that, that I think is important, which is that, you know, all the small businesses that are in that junction deal with feasibility every day. I mean, the co-op probably knows this way better than I do, which is that they've got to have cash flow coming in to count, to, to sort of offset salary costs, lease rate costs. Everybody's got this sort of trade-off that's happening. And it's the same thing in our site. We need our site to be cash positive in some way. It's got to be able to, able to sustain itself, and if it's not able to sustain itself with what's happening on the site, then that means the city's got to be involved in some way in meeting that shortfall. And so, from that, we just wanted to provide a few, sort of in the last column, some community value considerations. You can get local businesses there. You can continue to activate the street, both for safety as well as for foot traffic, which I know, you know, one of the things that I hear from some of the small businesses is, you know, having additional people in that area is helpful, because it probably means they're more likely to shop in that area. Continuing to have an opportunity to diversify who's in that area, seniors, housing, having additional customers, and so forth. And so, we just wanted to provide just a little bit of, of sense about what that sort of trade-off is around parking and some of the space that's been proposed. The final two rows there, and, you know, I appreciate what one of the public testimony ones was about Veterans Plaza, that could be any site. There was no intent to say that, that the city staff in some way want that as the example, but I think the point is, is that anytime you put in a public fountain, anytime you put in a meeting space, you know, anytime you change that site, there's a cost that comes with that. And, you know, currently, we're in the process right now designing three parks. We've got two playground parks, and then we've obviously got the dog park, and I think, you know, as we'll talk about a little bit later on, doing things that you would think are fairly cost-effective costs money. You've got to plan for it. You've got to make sure it's ADA accessible. You've got to make sure that there are safety requirements around it. You've got to make sure that it's functional. And so, you know, these are costs that would have to be offset in some way. And if we're talking about some of the community amenities, some proposals have offered some sense of community, of some level of community amenities. You know, obviously, the city can say that's not enough, and as we'll talk about on, on I think a later slide, that may be an opportunity for the city to step in and say, we don't think there's enough. We may want to contribute something to this project in some way that is helpful from a community perspective. The same thing obviously goes for sustainability. You know, we, we again have some of the proposals that have offered some sustainability features. Again, those are cost items in some ways. There's some value that's created, you know, from solar and some other things, which makes the entire project more cost-effective, but even as we see with things like composting in the city, it's still a cost item. There is no positive revenue that is, that is generated from at least some of our sustainability features. Sometimes they're cost neutral, but there sometimes still is a cost, and again, the city can decide that if there are additional sustainability features that we would like for a project or for something to happen on that site, no matter what happens, that can be a consideration that we can make to contribute to the site. Fair, fair value, again, in terms of if something does happen at the site that someone else is proposing to do on it, the city should get some concept of fair value for the opportunity for that person to utilize the site. So, what can that money go to? It can go into our general fund. It can go to enhance some of our parks. It can go for additional city services. It can go to reduce tax rate. I mean, as we've talked about in last year's budget cycle, and we will talk about again in the fiscal year sixteen budget cycle, there's lots of ways that general fund revenue is spent, and we've got all these options in front of us. As my father says, it's always better to have options than to not have options about some of these things. Some of that fair value can be reinvested in the junction development. The city can make a decision that fair value can be, go to create something. It can go to enhance something. It can go to make something that is not as desirable, more desirable, as an example. Third bullet, it can go for proposed tenants. So, you know, the city can choose to, specifically within a, a development or redevelopment option, choose to enhance or assist one particular tenant, if it decides that that is an important characteristic, and/or if there are some goals that have been outlined by the city that are important around that, they can go to, to be helpful around that. And then finally, it can go to address some of these issues that we've talked about. I mean, you know, having dealt with some traffic issues for some other projects in my past, I know that sometimes it's helpful for those entities that deal with traffic mitigation to know, okay, so what is the project? Saying that something is, happening is helpful, but how many more cars, how many more feet, how many more people are going to be going through that area? That can be sort of the first step in saying, okay, so now we know exactly. That can be sort of the first step in saying, okay, so now we know exactly what the, sort of, quantification of what the problem's going to be. You know, the city can decide to take some of its fair market value and do something actively to try to mitigate some of the things that are happening in the junction. Again, these are just options that are available to the city as they think about, as you all think about, you know, what happens at the junction. And again, this is not to say that any of this is going to happen or not. It's just to say that there is a positive side of, there is a positive cash flow side of this that can be used for other community and public good if it's deemed something that's important. There's also this concept of sort of a long-term financial impact. Again, the site is not on the city's public tax rolls right now, so it is publicly owned. You know, theoretically, there's sort of an opportunity cost, which is fine right now. The city is saying that it's not going to be on the, it's not going to be taxed, the city's not going to be collecting property taxes from it because the project is feasible in some way. It's a parking lot. It provides us common good and public value, and so we're okay with that sort of opportunity cost of not doing something with it. You know, again, that opportunity cost, if something does happen on the site and it does go on to a taxable, a taxable property, it starts to contribute some level of funds to the city. You know, looking at some very, very rough figures, which I'm almost hesitant to put out there because Sarah and I talked about them only a few minutes ago, you know, depending upon what happens at the site and lease rates, because as she reminded me, there really has been no new construction of commercial in Toccoa Park, I think, in a while. Or if somebody else knows of something that we can get a good cost figure from, we will certainly take it, but we couldn't think of a lot. There's been a lot of renovation of existing commercial space, but not a lot of new construction. So if we make some assumptions around new construction and try to triangulate, we're anywhere between three-hundred to nine-hundred thousand dollars. That's not annually. That's probably over a ten-year period, so between thirty and eighty, ninety, and Sarah's not going to confirm anything for me because she doesn't want me to even say anything. But depending upon what goes there, there's a positive contribution to the city's tax rolls, and that would be the city portion, that number that I stated. So the total property taxes is higher than that, but the city portion that comes to the city would be, could be anywhere between thirty and eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year, depending upon what goes there. And again, that's just an opportunity cost. It doesn't have to happen today. Obviously, there's a decision that's made right now, which is that the project is feasible, and it can continue that way. That's one of the options that's available, I think, to the city. Just again, this is the timeline. As the mayor mentioned, we're sort of, we're obviously at November 24th, but on January 12th, we'll be talking about some of the specific financial information from the proposals. That is the last piece of information that has not been publicly discussed yet from the four proposals. And then we've got a series of meetings that we're proposing in January and February to continue to provide the community with an opportunity to talk a little bit about the proposals, about the options. One of the things we'll also do at the tail end of the January 12th meeting is to sort of re, just quickly reintroduce that January 2014 conversation that we had around options, around a no-build, do-nothing option, status quo, do a government build, look at one sort of individual proposal, sort of unsolicited, or just one contemplation, one proposal. And now we've sort of been able to get all this information around that option that we chose in January, which is to put out an RFP and see if it would be, attract any commercial interest. And so we'll just quickly go over that at the end of January 12th, but really provide the opportunity, January and February, for people to contemplate options and the proposals that we have thus far, leading to sometime in February with the council having an opportunity to talk about next steps for the process. Thank you very much.
I just have one question. When you were talking about fair value, and I was thinking you might at least say something about kind of how you get that fair value? And what I was thinking of in my own mind was, well, you can turn over the property to somebody, which is essentially a sale. You can say, okay, we're going to do a ground lease for a period of time, like ninety-nine years. Is that the, are those the primary ways that you get fair value? Are there other ways?
I think those are going to be probably the primary ways for a project like this. There's, you know, part of the conveyance is important to whomever, if the decision is to go with a proposal or a concept, that entity's going to have to get financing for whatever they choose to do, more likely than not. And so, sort of the legal status, their legal ownership and/or ability to do something on that site will be important. I think long, you know, I'm hopeful that the capital markets today sort of see long-term ground leases as pretty much equivalent to sales. I know that in other jurisdictions they do. But those are just, those are two ways that I would think would probably be most popular for a site like this. And even within those two, the cash flow can come to the city a number of ways. You can convey the site and still get money over a period of time. You can participate in the lease rates that are happening on the site. You can ask for a lump sum money today, which is at discounted net present value, what you think's going to happen there. You can ask for monthly or annual lease payments that can adjust. I mean, there's a lot of flexibility that one can devise as it relates to making sure that the city is made whole for whatever happens there.
And there's that same flexibility whether it's a transfer of ownership or a lease?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that would definitely be part of the conversation, is how the city wants to convey it. Because again, it is the city's property. The city retains 100% control of this. We would sign any documents, and so we're not going to sign any documents until the city is happy with the agreement.
Councilmember Schultz, and then councilmember Mail.
I can think of two properties that are new in the city, a commercial that you could use. One would be the Walgreens, which was built, opened about two years ago. So I think it's relevant, and it's about the size of a building that would fit on that lot if you just covered the entire lot with a Walgreens. Heaven forbid. And the other is that new structure down on New Hampshire Avenue, south of 410, opposite the Dunkin' Donuts, where the fire, the theater burned down.
Right.
It's a fairly conventional, one-story building, but it was a ground-up construction, so it's not really a renovation. So that's two, possibly.
Yes, those are both good examples. The challenge we have is that when we're going through and trying to determine how the assessor places value on it per square-footage basis, those particular properties are part of a larger parcel, and it's taxed as a single value.
Mm-hmm.
And that was one of the biggest challenges we had in terms of going through and evaluating things. So it's not just a single assessed value for the Walgreens building, for example.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned a long-term ground lease. In that arrangement versus just a sale, does the, even if the property is still owned by us, a public entity, does it then produce property taxes, or no?
There are, which was something we will explore, but there are leasehold improvements that can generate some property taxes and/or some payment in lieu of taxes, which is another concept that could be introduced to try to make sure that the city and the county is made whole for the public services that have to happen at that site. So it's something we would have to probably look into, but it is possible, I think.
Okay. I think that, so the, for example, the Junction Task Force report described a set of uses for the site, and those represented value, and identified some of the trade-offs. It was, you know, expanding co-op, other business uses, open space, and now I'm forgetting the rest of the list, but we've talked about them before.
Yes.
There's then traffic, right? So negative, negative traffic impacts is a problem, pedestrian access, bike access, the finances in terms of making it work out the way you just described it. So we've got that whole balancing act. And I guess the toughest part comes when one thing the community wants comes at the expense of another, when you can't do, you know, 20% of each of those things. And we don't really know that yet, and I appreciate the work the city's done to help develop and flesh out this process, that the developers and the co-op and other city residents included have been willing to, you know, put out designs to come to community meetings. Because I feel like we're making progress in at least people understanding more of the options. And I think that in January and February, we'll have even more opportunity to discuss all of those options, including, as you said at the opening, or the mayor maybe said at the opening of the meeting, the original, you know, four options of no change, of a single, single, single partner project, et cetera, public build. Once we get through the financing discussion in January, to me, then, that whole conversation of these trade-offs, of which financing is one of them, you know, become more important. And we have to, I think, find ways to challenge ourselves to think about them as trade-offs, not, you know, not, we can't fit everything on this site, and to try to get the public to be part of that conversation about trade-offs too, which I think they're very willing, we heard that tonight, very willing to be part of. I guess at some point, you know, we're going to need to understand, you know, more detail about the valuation. I guess, do we have anything more specific, for example, on underground parking? I mean, we've got, we've had a ballpark of forty to fifty thousand per space for a while now. Is that?
I think that one is a spot-on number from, I think Roz has gotten some third-party even confirmation that that's a good number for, that that's a good number.
Right. And then if you, just to follow up on one of the residents' questions earlier tonight about parking needs of businesses across the street, is there any way to try to get, you know, more of their opinions to better assess parking demand, not just their current parking demand of this site, but their sort of current use of parking in and around those businesses, which includes Lee, Grant, Manor Circle, and Carroll?
Yes. Other than saying yes, I don't know what else to say. I know that one of, yeah, I know one of the things we've been trying to do is talk to some of the surrounding businesses to get a better sense about some of their needs because it's a commercial corridor, and I think people respect that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just a quick follow-up on the question on the price on the underground parking. If it becomes obvious that the site, that in order to put any structure on the site, there has to be excavation because what's there is fill, is that, does that kind of become part of the cost that would have to happen anyway so that, so that the incremental cost, the opportunity cost for doing parking is actually less, assuming you have to excavate?
I do not know. Is your question, if they have to?
I'm assuming the underground parking is a total, total for excavation and building and filling, so that if the, if the site is fill and you have to excavate to do any structure that isn't a parking structure, but is, you know, building or above-ground anything, that you'd probably have to excavate.
Uh...
And therefore, the incremental cost for parking is?
I'm going to let Sarah try to answer that question because I don't have an idea about it.
And I'm just thinking, in general, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, specifically, you know, knowledge on this case or anything.
One of the options that might be a possibility is doing footings. I've seen other projects where they've just done footings down to a certain point where the ground is more stable. Whether that's a cost-effective approach, I don't know. But as with many things, you won't know the details until you get a better sense of what one of the, what the development might be like.
The other area that comes into that is, is, has to do with how open the underground parking is, and if you have to do the ventilation and all that, because, so. When it gets down to, I mean, when it gets down to design, that's when you get the real figures.
Right. The cost estimates that Roz has pulled together for all of the, all of the numbers here are based on real-life examples in the immediate area. So they're fairly realistic in terms of what to expect, both from a low end as well as a high end.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together. So I think as councilmember Mail said, this is sort of a broad brush, first look at these things. And as I know a number of residents really want to continue working on this for the month of December, can we talk about how this is going to fit into the next conversation we'll have about financials and where that will go?
Yeah. So we're still developing what that will look like, but I think in short, each of the developers has proposed a, their answer for the fair market value that they would propose for the site. I think that we would sort of take a look at that, as well as perhaps taking a look at what some comparables are in that immediate area from the city's perspective, right? I think getting a developer telling me what it's worth is one thing, but me having a very good sense about what I think it's worth is probably a better, a number, a baseline to sort of compare against. Again, the city has gotten a, an appraisal done. You know, an appraisal is just a spot and time estimate, and so I think we'll have probably a range of things from the city's perspective that we would probably expect to get, knowing that each of the proposals is proposing something a little different. They've got a different number of underground parking, and they've got more or less community features or sustainability features, so they're sort of offsetting things that happen. But I think we will sort of do a deeper dive in terms of each proposal and what kind of value we're getting effectively from that, so that at least you, the council and the community can be armed with some thoughts around the financial market value that each of the development proposals is proposing for the site.
Okay. And I think as we then head into the conversation about options, if we could think about, you know, having as much information to be able to compare apples to apples, I know it's, you know, it's going to, might be a little bit difficult, but as you're working on pulling that together, it would be helpful.
Got you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I find this information useful, although I will admit, not immediately, but then again, I don't think there's any pretense that we're going to make any calculations sitting here. There's a question of community values that goes beyond amenities. One of the community values that we have is walkability, bikability, that amenities are going to be close to home to enable a large number of people to walk and bike and so on. And I would couple that with remarking that the world is changing, that people are relying on modes of transportation other than just getting in your car and driving places. And that's a good thing, of course. And I'll also add in the observation, especially since we've installed the parking pay station, which it appears now is not going to come anywhere close to paying for itself. Well, we've proven that that parking lot is not needed as a parking lot, anything near the number of spaces that's in there. If you add up the co-op's current seventeen spaces on Sycamore, plus eighteen or so that they're leasing the space for, I'm not neglecting the loading dock needs, which take some space on paved surface. But in any case, and you look forward to the way that car vehicle ownership patterns are changing and vehicle use patterns are changing, if we truly try to be forward-looking about this, I think we can inform a calculation of the actual parking need. So an underground parking space might cost forty, fifty thousand dollars. I'm not going to dispute that figure, but that is all the more reason to try to rationalize the amount of parking that is needed at this site. So I'm making a point that I think everyone in this room understands, but I think it's worth emphasizing and then bringing it back again at the next meeting when we talk about things like parking and costs and all of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Well, one, I think it's apparent that the parking lot that's there now is not particularly heavily used, is what you're saying. But the thing is, is that when you put a bunch of new land uses there, which is, the purpose of which is to attract people, some are going to walk, some are going to come in their automobiles, and they're going to want to park there, or at least proximate to it. The folks on Sycamore aren't going to want them to park on Sycamore, and the people in Manor Circle aren't going to want them to park. So you can't use today as a baseline of what the future parking needs are going to be.
Agreed.
And so it's, it's, that's where the expertise of the developer comes in, who builds projects and has to calculate these sorts of things, unless there's an overriding zoning ordinance that simply forces somebody to build X number of parking space. that simply forces somebody to build X number of parking spaces without regard to reality. What I wanted to talk about, a couple of things. I mean, looking at this matrix that we have up on the screen here right now, is, it's interesting, but this is not really something that, if there's going to be a development project, that we really have to pay much attention to. Because this is what the developer pays attention to. And once the developer's taken possession of the real estate and has gotten his permits and he's gotten his bank financing, all of these calculations are going to have gone into the developers, what they call a development pro forma, which basically does what this does. It says, if we build so many square feet of retail, this is how much it's going to cost us. And, and, but, but over a period of twenty, twenty-five years, this is what we're going to get back in revenue. And if it works on paper, and the, and the company or the bank that's going to do the financing agrees, then the project gets financing. So it, these numbers, I mean, so it's interesting to look at this and to, and it's important for us to understand it's, because we need to understand why developers will say, yes, we will do this, no, we won't do that. And it's important because if we ask the question, say, well, can you scale down your project from three stories to one story, and they say, well, no, we need at least two stories, that's why. Because they're saying, well, there's not going to be enough revenue to make the project work. And so it just comes down, from a developer's point of view, to being able to figure out, to balance the costs with the projected revenues. And that's, that's, that's the lesson we all want to be able to learn, learn here. As we go a little further down into January and February, where we start talking about specific developers, specific projects, at some point in time, we're going to be asking them, how much is it going to cost you to build this project? And where are you going to get the money to do it? Some of it will be equity, the developer themselves will put some, some money into it, but the rest are going to have to borrow from a bank. An experienced developer, one that's done a lot of these projects, will understand how to do that and have those resources available to them. And that's because it's how they make their living. And so, so it's, it's an educational process to, for us to go through this and understand how, how a developer sees things and how a developer processes. For us, the critical thing is, is that we don't want to get all excited about a project, only to find out that the developer says, oh, gosh, we can't seem to find a bank that wants to lend us the money to do this. We're really sorry. So we need to be smart about that. We have to ferret out that information, and they are going to want to give us that information to be able to persuade us that if we do any of these four proposals, and we may not, but if we choose one of those proposals, that it will actually get built. Because the developer has the capacity, financial capacity to do the project. So that's part, one of, one element of the evaluation. Certainly not the most important element, but it's one element. And finally, one other thing I wanted to talk about is appraisals. There, we were just discussing it. I mean, there are different appraisals, and you'll get different values for different purposes. We had an, if we got an appraisal today, we own a city, it's a city-owned lot, and we ask an appraiser to appraise the lot, we're going to get one value because it's just an empty parking lot, for the most part. If a developer comes along and says, well, I'm thinking about building such and such a thing on this lot, the developer goes out and gets an appraisal, well, appraisal's going to be totally different because it's looking at the highest and best use of that for that site. And they're going to say, well, this land is really valuable because you can't build this, this project there, whatever it is, the expand the co-op and maybe build some retail stores and other things like that. So the land is valuable all of a sudden. And then when the bank comes along and says, well, okay, you want to borrow how much from us? Well, we're going to have to get you, have an appraisal that tells us what this project's going to be like after it's completed. Because that's what-
It's the collateral.
That's the collateral for the loan. And so if that's, that's the appraisal, that bottom line is the appraisal that matters. And we won't know that number for a long time.
We're never.
We have a long ways to go, and we may never know that, that number because that's confidential information between the lender and the borrower. But those are just some aspects that I think need, need to be, to help, I want to help people understand what we're talking about here.
Counselmember Smith, did you change your mind?
Yes.
Okay. Counselmember Stewart.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I think this is very useful information as we move forward to the January and February conversations, given the conversation we had last week about the changes with our state government, what we can expect. And I know in a moment when we talk about the dog park, we're going to talk about the loss of some public open space funding as well. So I think in that context, having this information as we consider all the options of what can happen in the junction is important, and just wanted to bring that up to keep that in the back of our heads.
I would, I will just underscore that. There was an unnamed council member on this council sent me a note in the Washington Post about Montgomery County's slower-than-expected revenues that are coming in. And, you know, I think the county executive has already articulated that there's going to be a budget deficit for fiscal year sixteen for the county. The state has already identified that there's going to be a state funding deficit for fiscal year sixteen. We're seeing remnants of that, as Councilmember Stewart said, around our program Open Space and some very tense conversations that we've had recently with Park and Planning. And so many of those local fund options that we would normally go to, to get additional money to do projects, is really drying up. And we cannot count on those, I think, the way that we would like to or have in the past counted on those kinds of funds.
Counselmember Mael.
Thank you. I think there was also an article shared or that people saw in the Washington Post about how overcrowding in our schools projected out ten years could threaten the development moratorium altogether, which might also affect the site. I don't know what the, whether the timelines could overlap or not. I think Councilmember Schultz mentioned the idea of future parking. And so, you know, for example, projecting out if a Thai restaurant or other restaurant opens in the current bacon site, once the bakery's open, what is the parking demand for those sites? Another cost on the income side here, I'm not sure quite how you, what set of ledger it goes on, but, you know, what is the value of an available parking space to existing business? What's the, what's the value of that in terms of the cost of those leased spaces? How much does it raise, raise rents, raise leases, generate more revenue? And we don't have those numbers here, but at the end of the day, that might be a number that we want to get a sense of. I guess the other, I do think these numbers are helpful because one of the options that is at least still in the back of my mind is the, is the city build. The, you know, if we build something, what would be the return on investment of the city building it? Or if it was a public-private partnership, what would be the return that we might expect if public money goes in to cover, as Councilmember Schultz says, the portion of the loan that they can't get because it's a smaller building, it's not going to have a great rate of return? What is the period of payback or getting closer to breaking even? So I appreciate having these numbers for that reason. And I guess I'd just say, in a future table, we need to do a better job of putting non-monetary values in a, in a chart as well. And we have sort of had those in the community value space. But I think, sort of like the spreadsheet that a member of the public brought us on sustainability at the beginning of the meeting, that sort of lays out, you know, all these yes or no questions. And so something like that, that really allows us to identify which, which of the four proposals, which of the alternative proposals, which proposals that we really haven't flushed out yet, you know, meet some of those needs, high, medium, low. And I hope maybe we could do that after the next, maybe as a way to inform the public meetings that happen in mid-January to mid-February, after the, after the next financial discussion we have in mid-February. Having something like that would help people, people might have something more specific to react to, as well as if, well, the city can do that, we can do that based on the proposals we have before us. We could get the co-op's help in doing that with what they have put together, the options they've put together, and anything else that comes up between now and January. You know, keeping it simple, but, but in a way that makes it clear to people what options are on the table. Thank you.
And I'll turn to DCM Ludlow.
One of the things that, as you just mentioned, Councilmember Mael, there's some other kinds of different costs or benefits. One of the things that was really not identified, called out on this, but is part of the discussion, is how does, whatever happens or doesn't happen on this site affect surrounding properties, property values of residences and businesses nearby, and the income that might be generated from jobs. And so all of those are things that are hard to quantify, but it's part of the trade-offs as we look at this and trying to think through. Sometimes, you know, a very simple thing can be, if the aesthetics are something that are particularly good, it can raise property values on surrounding properties. If it causes, if there's something that causes a particular problem, it can have negative effects. So all of that is, is to be looked at when you're looking at the specifics of, of any of the projects or an option to not do anything. So I just wanted to raise that, that, looking at that larger area and the impact of the value on the larger area is also important.
Okay. I think we've covered that topic, and we've got one more agenda item this evening, which is the dog park update.
Can I ask a question?
After.
After the dog park?
Or, no, but yes. No, you can't ask, ask one from the podium, but we'll find out what the question is and-
It's just a question of, in terms of this process moving forward in January and February and so forth, the, what, we have these four proposals that developers put before us, and I'm just wondering, on these other kinds like public build or other, how are we going to flesh out, how are we going to get numbers and some of the interesting ideas that councilmen, just what, what do you think the city and the council and the city staff can contribute to fleshing out some of those other proposals? That's my question.
Sorry, I was, I mean, that, I think that's-
I'm not sure we'll have a good answer at eleven fifteen.
Right. Well, I think, I, that was the point I was trying to make before to the city manager, that as we put together these numbers and they think about the presentation on the financials, on the four initial concepts that we have, to think about, when you put that together, the other options, how we can have as much information as possible so we're comparing apples to apples, knowing that it's not going to be fully developed.
Well, the financials on the originals are changed. Echo Housing Key Star went from thirty-six residential units to twenty-five. That must radically change.
Well, I would imagine, though, when we discuss it in January, that'll, we'll have revised, I'm looking at the city manager stretching, information.
Yeah.
Right?
There's, my point here is that there's a lot has changed, including the co-op's proposal. And as you might know, I favor re inclusion of the co-op as a fifth finalist. I haven't brought that up here yet because I think it can wait. I think actually doing that now or in January doesn't make a difference. But there have been radical changes to several of the proposals.
I'm just answering the question that was asked on how we're going to be able to compare things come January, February.
What is the deal?
You're not on the mic, Mael.
Yeah, I want to, I guess, I just, I just want to be, I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't have enough information to answer that question today. The other thing is that because there are so many different options that are available as it, as relates to a government build, as an example, there is no probably way that the city's going to be able to provide accurate estimates of all the different permutations or options that are out there. I think there's lots of good estimates in terms of construction costs that are out there, but without knowing anything more for the January and February conversation, it's going to be very broad. It's going to be very broad.
Right. I'm not even talking about the financials. I'm just talking about the concept. I mean, what, what, what are the, what could the public do there? What could they build? What kind of entities? What kind of structures? And, yeah, and then what might be entailed? And financing, I mean, there's the obvious one of just, you know, direct payments, but what kind of creative financing might be available to a project like that? Or, or, you know, what kind of revenue sources might there be? What kind of options are there in a pub? I mean, all of these are, to me, are fascinating questions and important questions. So it's not just a question of providing, you know, a comparison of financials, it's developing the concept itself. Like, we have developers who have each developed a concept of what they would put there. What about the public concept of what could be put there? Or the public-private concept? Or the co-op's concept, working with the city? I, I mean, these are all possibilities, and I'm just wondering how we're going to develop these possibilities? And what kind of process will there be amongst city staff to help us? I mean, in the community, we're certainly going to try, but we need your help.
And I think we're going to continue to talk about that and try and figure out the best way to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Dog park update.
Is it on, is it on here?
I'm just gonna, as I see pretty much everybody but Joe Edgell staying, I'm going to, I'm going to just talk about it from the slide here while they get up.
Sure, go.
Great.
I got a dog in front of me.
Got a dog in front of you. So this is just a bit of a progress report around the dog park. Again, even, just as a preface, we are sort of at a point now where we are before getting some more specific cost estimates. And so there will be little to no cost estimates that are included in this progress report. That is one of the things, as we'll talk about later on, that we will hope to get a finer point on in December, and if we need to in January, but we'd like to do it in December. This is just an update of, on the slide, of some of the actions to date that we've gone through, particularly since April of 2014, when the council approved in the fiscal year fifteen budget funds for the design of a dog park. We have, in June, we had a session where we contemplated various locations. There was a location that was preferred that was approved to move forward with. And then really since June, we've been working on some site survey and some other processes around trying to get a better sense about what it would take to do design on that site, including with the, with the, again, the help of Tacoma Dogs, getting a contributed architect to be helpful in terms of designing the site, which we'll talk about here in a second. And also having some additional conversations around program open space funds, which we'll talk about a little bit later, that are drying up, as I mentioned before. This is the design, which is impossible to see unless you have it up close and personal. So I think that the version we have on our website is probably a better one. We just wanted to provide just some coloration to get at some of the more specific concepts that are in the design.
The resolution on that electronic version isn't great. If you could find a higher resolution version to post electronically, that'd be cool.
Okay, we'll look for that.
It, to make it more readable.
I guess the first thing is that we've got sort of two different areas for the dog park. We've got sort of a low-activity dog area and a high-activity dog area. We've got it, the arrows sort of point to some of the entrance from the parking lot into sort of the, the dog park area. Once you enter, you can go towards the large, or sorry, you can go towards the low-activity dog area, or you can continue through to go to the high-activity dog area. We've got some contemplation of, and again, these are, at this point, very much just general specifications. The actual sizes will change over time. But we've got retaining walls that we have, in the design, we have noted that need to be there for runoff and some other reasons. We have some draining, drainage and culvert areas that we need throughout the site. And we have some bridges over some of those drainage areas, which we believe is going to be important. Up at the top, we have a tree and a, and a retaining wall around that tree as a tree protection for one area of the site. protection for one area of the site. And then in terms of the actual size for the low-activity dog area and the high-activity dog area, we've just got two areas that are, that are located here. I believe that the total size for the dog park, this one that is envisioned, is, I want to say it's close to eighteen thousand square, sixteen thousand square feet.
But those retaining walls aren't there.
At least they were when we had our last...
No.
Well, there's, there's, they're not kind of the tall retaining areas. There are ways to deal with the, the, they're sloped, but they're to deal with the stormwater and those different slopes. If I can, just giving a little bit of explanation here, the part that's near the top of the park is the highest altitude part of the site, and so water runs down. And we did get a, the survey that included the location of the major trees. We've worked very nicely with the architect from Tacoma Dogs on some of these things, but the, the major issues as we were doing the design seemed to me, seemed to be that we needed to have some engineering analysis on several of these components. One, had, one component is that when you have the little, the, it's actually a relatively small retaining wall around the tree near the top of the site, but because it's high enough to trigger a foundation, we've got to have that spec, the drainage areas that are in the purple, that are kind of vertical, require engineering design. We've got two bridges that go over those drainage areas that also require engineering design because you need to be able to have a vehicle, a truck, to be able to go into and across the site for maintenance and that kind of thing. And then there's concern just about the materials of the, of the walkways. The areas of retaining wall that are shown here are very small, they can be sloped, they might be a wall. That's part of what we just need to identify through an engineering analysis. We were somewhat delayed because we're right at the end of having engineers on call for us, and so we're, in the past, last week, I think, or the week before, there, we re-upped and retained some engineers. We're in the process of getting the new contracts done, so it's just getting them back on board so that we can then ask them to put proposals to us to look at these very specific things. We're not asking them to do a full engineering design, but it's just for the specific components that we do need to have an engineer's eye for. I think that's all I was going to say.
We can go to the next slide.
Wait, could I stop there for a second?
Sure.
Do people, where do people get in? And do people who want to bring their dogs to the high-activity dog area have to go through the low-activity dog area?
The, the way it works is, over to the left is the parking lot that...
Where it says drainage?
Yeah. So, just to the left of where it says drainage is, is the parking lot that serves Tacoma Piney Branch Park.
It's a blue line.
And it is owned by Park and Planning up to the, up to the property line. So, not only is that how you enter, but we need to get permission from, and approval from Park and Planning for use of the parking lot and for the specs for the, the walkway bridge that goes into the site. When you're walking along the path, it kind of curls, there's a fence, there's fencing between that and the small dog area or the low-activity dog area. So, you can go in there, or you can continue on through, over to the other bridge, over to the high-activity dog area.
So, you can get to the high-activity dog area without having to go through?
That's right.
Yes, so Councilmember Mail, if you look at that arched line, it's sort of, is a sort of an arch that's below the low to org activity area, that's the fence line. And that area right below that is the entry walk area. Everybody just walks in there, and then you'll see, could you go to the slide before this? That would actually be probably better. So, there, that gives you a little bit better picture without the arrows.
Yeah, I can kind of...
Right where the hand is, that's the vestibule. That's a double gated, spring-loaded door vestibule, so that you bring your dog in, you take your dog off leash after the gate closes behind you.
And then you go through here.
And then the small dog, low-activity area, you turn to your left and go up into it. Or if you have a high-activity dog or a large, large high-activity dog, or a small high-activity dog, you go straight.
The, the two large gates here are vehicular access. They're not the normal access for people to, you go through, take your dog in.
That's what was confusing me. Thank you.
Some of the next steps that we have is, once we get some of that engineering work done, we will be able to put these, this design out for construction costing. We're hopeful to get that construction cost estimates back in January, February of next year. At that point, we'll have a much better sense about what we think the cost is. We may propose some additional changes. We'll talk to Architect Tacoma Dogs to sort of see what we have at that point. And then our vision is that we would come back to council and talk a little bit more specifically about cost estimates, and then also, at that point, probably have a better sense of what the final design for something like this might be. Once we get, sort of work through that, we'll be in a better position, I think, to sort of start talking about construction start dates. If we go to the next, actually, if we go one more slide over, I'm just going to, there are just a few questions that we still need to internally get some answers to around mandatory review, whether or not we're going to need permits for certain things. We're going to have to get some answers on this because this will impact construction start dates and might even impact cost in some ways. So, we just want to make sure that we get some of those outstanding questions answered. Those are also some of the things we're going to be working on between now and January or February. If we go back one slide, we mentioned program open space. We have, similar to the other two parks at Colby Avenue and Sligo Mill, we asked Park and Planning for, we asked the state for a letter of concurrence for funding for the dog park through program open space. Earlier this year, we were informed by Park and Planning, who did not inform anybody, apparently, that they were chopping most municipalities' requests for program open space funding. And so, that, first of all, impacted us on Colby and Sligo Mill because we had already had those projects, those parks in process earlier. So, we really had to fight to just keep the funds that we thought we had for those two projects. When it came to the dog park, they have been very clear that they are really not going to be accepting new proposed, new requests for funding if you didn't have it sort of identified in, you know, early two thousand and thirteen. So, that sort of puts our dog park estimates at a bit of a, at a bit of a disadvantage. In our budget for fiscal year fifteen, we had budgeted seventy thousand in fifteen, and I think we sort of tentatively put in a little bit more than a hundred thousand in fiscal year sixteen. But seventy thousand in fifteen for design and construction, we anticipated that we might be able to get three-fourths of that reimbursed through program open space, which would have been about fifty-two thousand dollars. Looks likely that that is now not going to be the case. And so, it's just one of those additional items that we have, that we will have to work around as it relates to potential funding. Once we get a better idea about costs, we'll also have a better idea about how we're going to pay for something like this, and how we may have to phase it, or at least understand what the cost implications are of doing something this year, and maybe trying to push off something to fiscal year sixteen if we need to do something like that.
I'm a little confused because I thought the project open space money was both federal and state money and not county money. So, have they misappropriated money from previous years that they now donate money? Or what's the...
The situation is that program, program open space is state money. It goes to the municipal, it goes to the counties, and municipalities are eligible to get some of that. There has traditionally been a formula, the, we get X amount.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah. And the state really reduced the total amount of program open space money coming to the counties. What happened without any of the municipality's knowledge was that the Park and Planning wanted the money for its projects, so it took ours. And...
And it took lots of...
It took everybody else's. And, and they were feeling desperate because they had all of these projects on their capital plans that the county council wanted, and all of a sudden, they didn't have the money for it, and that POS funds were there. When we went, we kept asking for a total, how much is in our account? Because we'd gotten a couple strange comments, so we wanted to know how much was in our account. And they finally agreed to a meeting. We kind of forced them into a meeting, at which point they admitted that they had taken the money. The thing that was interesting, of course, was that one of the projects that the POS money is funding is for us to do their park, the Sligo Mill Park, which they own. And so, they really kind of had to, first of all, they had given us incorrect information. They had taken the, taken the money without telling anyone. So, they did restore the base amounts for Colby Avenue and Sligo Mill. With the program open space letter of concurrence for the dog park, if for some reason there were more funds available through program open space, even if we spent city money to do the dog park, because we have the letter of concurrence, if program open space money became available later, we could reimburse ourselves from that. So, we're, you know, continuing to keep that live, but it's, it is not likely an option for the next year or two.
When, when we found out about program open space for the dog park, one of the things that we did in August was we applied for the Department of Natural Resources Community Parks and Playground grant as a replacement for what we thought we would get from program open space specifically for the dog park. Those are competitive funds, so I know that Park and Planning effectively diverted all the municipalities to this funding source to try to be made whole. And so, we will see, we have, I think we get that decision in June, about whether or not we were, we are able to get any money from that grant program.
Assuming that those funds aren't moved around by the state?
That's right. Now, this, the, the state had changed community parks and playground money maybe three years ago. It used to be available to both counties and municipalities as a bone to the municipalities as everything else was being cut. The community parks and playground process was only limited to municipalities, but it's a small amount of money. It's a competitive process. And so, the county can't take it, but...
But the state can.
But one of the reasons that, even as you spoke and gave the city's priorities at the legislative priorities, joint priorities hearing the other night to the state, was one of the things that we asked for was to keep the program open space money and these other funds. We really need them.
I think that's it, actually.
Actually, I would like to follow up on something. Councilmember Grimes had, had emailed a couple requests, and, and one of the things that may come up, and I'm just bouncing this out, if the engineers' money that, if, if it's going to take more than ten thousand dollars to pay for engineering work, that would normally have to come back to the council for approval before they could begin. It may be something, if we'd like to expedite this, that if we could get the approval or to, to move forward with the lowest of the proposals in December while you're not meeting, and then bring that to the council after the fact in January. You know, that is a possibility to, to continue to move the process quickly. I don't know that it's going to go over ten thousand dollars, but I, it is something that may help expedite the process.
So, if we were going to expedite it, you would need something now that says...
I, I think that we would need, I guess, I'm not sure legally what is needed, but I would think that if you would have a vote that said that it is okay for us to, you know, award a contract for the engineering work, if it goes over ten thousand dollars...
So, we could say like up to fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, you, there could be either a cap on it, it could be something that Brian can send out an email at the time, so that, you know, that you can look at, you know, whatever the proposed, you know, what the lowest proposal is. We have three entities that we would submit it to. I'm just throwing that out as a possibility in case we get to that point and we need to, we'd like to expedite it.
But you're saying that we would need to vote on something now, or we, or we could do it some other way?
So, we could make a motion to provide up to fifteen or twenty thousand dollars for Project X, in so long as the city manager provides a forty-eight hour notice after the, the best bid has been received and the city staff intend to move forward. It allows, you know...
You know, we'd come back to council in, in January if that were the case.
I'll personally be around almost the whole month of December and would not object to trucking over here for a special session that was publicly announced.
We'll be here on the eighth?
I don't know if we'll, yeah, I, I don't know if we'll have it on the eighth or not.
Yeah, I don't, we probably would not have prices back by then.
I'd, I'd feel more comfortable doing a special session if we need to.
Yeah, well, we'll see how it goes. And then we'll let you know and call a special session if we need to.
Question?
You really want to do questions?
Oh, yeah.
Are you sure?
Eleven thirty-four. I just have one.
We've got twenty-six minutes, twenty-five.
Oh, are we meeting the best route to midnight?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for more lights to disappear.
I'm just, the question I want to ask is, so...
Uh, Councilmember Mail.
I just wanted to say that in general, I'm supportive where this is going. I appreciate the city's work on it, and I appreciate looking at the design. I agree with Councilmember Grimes in terms of a high-resolution image online to be able to actually not have to screen it quite so much. And I expect when you come back with the engineering budget for approval, I would be inclined to, to vote for it. So, as far as I can tell, I'm sort of green-lighting where you're headed. And as I said last year at some point, you know, speed is important, so, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Just questions on, 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 when we get, get things. I mean, the, the renditions that we saw here are pretty much indecipherable. I mean, I'm sure that in real life, they're probably quite readable, but this is not particularly helpful. And I realize that it's going to be, you know, constantly changing as, as refinements are made. But we do need those. And secondly, I guess I'm trying to figure out when we will get some better idea of what this project's going to actually cost to build, and, you know, the, the designer's estimate. But before you go to the bidding process at all, just a, a rough calculation, because you're talking about two, two bridges that have to be engineered to carry a maintenance truck over two, two low areas or drainage areas, and that's going to add a lot of money to the, to the project. And, you know, if it's necessary, it's necessary, but if we get some idea of the ballpark we're talking about, that'd be great. Do you have any idea about when that might be?
The, the engineering firms will give cost estimates as part of, as part of the work that they do, but you never know till you get it out for bid.
No, I understand that. Okay. Well, so in other words, maybe by the end of this month, well, the end of December, we'll have an idea of what the costs are?
I, I think we will have, you know, even when we talked about it, I think back in June, we had some estimates for fencing and for ground cover. I think we'll have some very ballpark figures around some of the things that need to be engineered, which we don't have good cost estimates around. Couple that with a little bit of estimates around ground cover and fencing and some other things, we're going to have something, but it, it will be different from what we get when we bid it out.
Councilmember Seamus?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Mr. Kenner, for the work on this and for seeing it move forward. I really don't want to get involved in helping with the design of the dog park. I just want to see a dog park. And, sorry, you know, I really, when we get the estimates, when we need to make some financial decisions to make it happen, bring it back. Other than that, let's just keep moving forward. Thank you.
I do want to, just before, I, I totally forgot to thank Joe Edgell, because he has really put in a lot of time. He's taken off work multiple times to come and meet with us. And Eric Saul, who I've told I will name my first dog, uh, my first... us. And Eric Saul, who I've told I will name my first dog, uh, my first kid, after him, because he is really also pro bono contributing a tremendous amount of time in meeting with city staff to get this
Yeah, they've been terrific.
They've done a great job.
Councilmember Scholz?
Thank you. I just want to also say thank you, Joe. I don't think we could have done this without you and Tacoma Dogs. You guys have done an excellent job. If we do have to go through Montgomery County for a review of the project, do you have an estimate of how long that would take?
Well, one thing that I can say is that Montgomery County actually encouraged us to use this site, as opposed to some of the other sites we were looking at, which were on their land. All we're looking for is access from their land.
Okay. Are we going to get an easement for
That's probably my guess, based on my experience as an attorney, of the direction that we would go, is either it would be written into the MOU that works for this park, or there would be some more formal easement document.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
We have a meeting with Park and Planning, I think, for
I think it's mid-December.
Sometime in December.
Like second week of December or something.
And what Emily tells us is that Park and, that Park and Planning has been very supportive of just the concept. They want more downward county dog parks, and so we're also moving in the right direction from their perspective.
Anything else?
And I just sent around the higher-resolution drawing, so you should all have it now.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you all.
We're on business.
We'll return. See you next year, except for December 8.